Okay, the date is June 10th, 2024, and the time is 1800. I would like to call the Frederick County School Board Public Hearing to order. As a reminder, if you wish to speak during the public hearing today, please sign up on the signup sheets located to my left, your right. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment to add citizen and staff comments after the public hearing section.
Second.
Okay, we have an agenda, or a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Madam Vice Chair, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. Number one, to review and discuss administrative appointments pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot one, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for good cause graduation requirement waivers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot two.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
Just a quick question for all the folks out here in the audience. I know we have a packed house tonight. What time are we expecting to be back out of closed session?
Thank you. Great question. Mr. Chair, this shouldn't take more than 10 minutes. And we only have two items on the agenda unless the will the board has additional questions, but it shouldn't be no more than 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor of going into closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.[187.87]
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturdevent?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, we have two motions out of closed session. The first motion, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, we have the motions to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, we have another motion out of closed session. I move to approve the good cause graduation requirement waiver request for student A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Getting ahead of myself. Okay. All right, we are at... Oops, I'm sorry. Let us, as we normally do, just observe a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you for that. And let us stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay, we have staff and student recognition. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. If we can have Mr. Brett Clovis to please come up to the podium. He is our new assistant principal of James Wood High School. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Clovis has spent the last three years as an assistant principal at Admiral Byrd Middle School. Additionally, Mr. Clovis brings 19 years of teaching experience, all within Frederick County Public Schools. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Mr. Clovis has a Bachelor's of Arts in Secondary Education from Marshall University, just right up the road, and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership for George Mason University, as well as an administrative and supervision pre-K-12 certification. Please join me again in welcoming Mr. Clovis to his new role.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hummer, Dr. Angelo. It's with genuine excitement and a deep sense of responsibility that I embrace this new chapter of my career at James Wood High School. I'm eager to contribute to the ongoing growth and prosperity of our community. The commitment to excellence demonstrated by the professionals, administrators, and support staff at James Wood is truly inspiring, but I also have to express my deep appreciation to my daughter, who's back there, a rising James Wood sophomore, whose encouragement played a pivotal role in me applying for this position. To be entrusted with joining the deeply rooted traditions and successes of James Wood High School is a humbling honor. Once again, I extend my sincerest thanks for entrusting me with this incredible opportunity. I look forward to contributing to the legacy of excellence at James Wood High School and serving that remarkable community. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. See, now, it wasn't that bad, was it?
Did you have to stay for the whole meeting?
No.
All righty then, well, congratulations to you. This would be our time for public comments. Am I reading that correct?
Mr. Chair, the first is public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Where am I? Okay. We're at the point of our agenda to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting for the Red Bud District School Board vacancy position. All comments should be related to this purpose only. I also want to remind the public that we will conduct the hearing today, and the appointment of this vacancy is scheduled to take place at least seven days from this meeting. We will be in touch with the public on that new date and time. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name and residing district. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments, but will not respond to questions or engage in dialogue. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens. The speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of official minutes. As I understand it, there are no signatures and no one is scheduled to speak, so we are going to conclude the public comment section of this hearing and drive on. Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who hasn't signed up that wishes to speak? Fantastic.
Tell him, Mr. Clove.
Ms. Mall, are you ready?
All right. Okay, so next on the agenda is unfinished business. Dr. Hummer?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. We amended the agenda to add a citizen comment period, unless I'm sorry, unless that was the comment period that we just concluded.
That would have been the comment period.
Very good.
Did I get that correct?
I just wanted to make sure we checked all our...
That's why I read that whole spiel there.
Yes, we're good.
We had, right, we had public hearing, we had citizen comment. There are no comments, so we're moving forward. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you recall, at the last instructional committee meeting, as well as the last board meeting, there was a plethora of motions that came out of the instructional committee meeting. And as I've shared with you, I'm all about structure and doing things correctly, and there was actually one motion that was missed, and it was the approval of the science textbook that came out of that. So I know you all had approved that to move forward to the full board when we went back to the video, because Mrs. DeSantis does a fantastic job of writing up the minutes. We recognized that, unfortunately, that motion did not come forward from that particular board member. So we would like to open that up for you all's consideration for a motion, so that we can officially approve that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so do we have a motion by the board to approve the adoption of the science textbook?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the science textbook.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion does carry. And that will conclude the unfinished business. Now we are moving to new business, and again, I will pass it off to Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm about to pass this over to Mrs. Jordan. We have two bylaws that we have before you to take into consideration for approval, and as you know, the bylaws need to be read twice before they are approved. So what we are... I'm sorry, Mr. Bell, did you have a question?
Why isn't it on the screen or up there?
There was a presentation for this, no. Yeah, so, sorry about that.
I apologize for interrupting.
Yep, no, it's okay. So anyways, I apologize. So there are two bylaws. One of them is due to changing how constituents will sign up for public comment, which Mrs. Jordan will touch on here in a second. The second bylaw, which is the electronic participation, that is a change from the General Assembly, and as I mentioned, that needs two readings before it's approved. So it'll come before you today. We'll hear your questions, feedback from now until it'll be approved, or it's going to be proposed to be approved at the June 25th meeting. So with that, I will hand it off to Mrs. Jordan, and then, of course, open up to any questions from the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. In regards to bylaw 119P, it is being presented to you with a number of changes. The primary change is altering our process for signup for a public comment period. Currently, our process is to provide a signup sheet at the beginning of our meetings to allow the public to sign up. We are expanding that signup period, where the signup period will begin at 8:00 a.m. the day after the last board meeting, until noon of the day of the board meeting. The public will be able to sign up either electronically through our website. There will be a form that, if this is approved, will be launched on June 26th, so the public can sign up. Or members of the public can still call the school board office to add their name to the list. The proposed amendments to 119P also define what an eligible speaker, who an eligible speaker is, and that would include any resident of Frederick County, including any residents of Winchester City. It would include FCPS students, their legal guardians and parents, as well as any SCPS employees and any businesses that are located within Frederick County. Additionally, the proposed amendments would limit the public comment period to just 10 speakers, who will be given three minutes to speak. If they are representing a group, they will be given five. The first 10 members of the public to sign up will be allowed to speak. If the board wishes to extend that public comment period for that meeting, the board can do so if a majority vote to extend that comment period to allow any additional members of the public to speak. So if we have 15 members, it is at the pleasure of the board to extend that period to allow the 15 people to speak.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, quick question. Once the 10 citizens have signed up, will the 11th, 12th, and so forth still be able to sign up? Or will it close out, lock out?
Yes, Mr. Bell, that signup sheet will stay open from 8:00 a.m. the day after the last meeting until noon. And then, at that point, the board will be presented with the information of who has signed up. If it exceeds 10 members, then the board can decide whether to extend that period to allow all members of the public to speak.
Thank you.
Another part of the bylaw that has been proposed to be amended is we are adding a student participation paragraph. This is really in light of a new law that's coming into effect July 1, where in Code Section 22.1-79, the General Assembly has added that the school board may permit students to sign up. The board can require them to provide sufficient proof of the fact that they are a student. But this section that is being proposed will just not only encourage students, but also specifically permit students to participate in the public comment section. Another thing, just going back in the new signup procedures, what is being proposed is that when people sign up, whether by phone or online, they will have to provide their name, their magisterial district, their business address, if that is applicable, also your position with FCPS, if you are an employee, and the topic in which you wish to speak to the board about that evening. If the speaker chooses not to provide all that information or fails to sign up within that open window, then that name will not be added to the list. And then, lastly, the proposed changes are also just altering some of the guidelines for public comment based on the changes we've already talked about and clarifying some of the language. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has on these proposed amendments.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins? Couple questions. One, just to clarify, I know that we have some families that the parent is a teacher from outside the county, and through the tuition program, we allow them to be educated here at Frederick County. Those parents will still be able to sign up because they are a parent of a student.
Correct. If it is a parent or legal guardian of an SCPS student, they would be permitted to speak.
Okay, and that would also be provided with any... Say they have a doctor who wanted to come in and speak. Maybe a student has a medical condition. Would that doctor be able to come and speak on their behalf?
If they're speaking on behalf of the student, absolutely. Yes, yeah.
My next questions are, when some members of the community wanted to sign up, I want to ensure that we're not violating any of their Fourth or Fifth Amendment rights. If they don't want to give their name, you know, for one reason or another, can that still be left up to the chairman to allow them?
That would be a little... Because it specifically requires that you provide your name. I think that would be more difficult and would require an additional amendment to the bylaw, or that this not be added if we didn't want to require our citizens. Legally, the board has the ability, because you are presenting an open forum that allows the public to speak to you about various topics. You can require that a name be provided, as well as a magisterial district, to ensure that you're actually hearing from your constituents and the members of the Frederick County community.
Is there any kind of penalty if somebody says it? You know, say somebody comes in from Clark County and says that they're part of the Shawnee District. Is there any penalty that would be incurred by that person if they lied right there? Then I don't...
The board is not a court of law. There wouldn't be perjury or anything like that, no. It may impact their ability to sign up later. I will say, there is still language in here that does give the chairman discretion concerning public participation at the school board meeting. So if there is a unique situation that arises, the chairman still has some flexibility to address it in an appropriate manner.
I understand that. And, Mr. Chairman, you know, when we all took our oath of office here, we did, you know, make an oath to the Constitution, the Constitution of Virginia, not to violate any of those rights. I would keep it at your discretion whether to allow somebody to keep that information or not when they're signing up. And I would want to tread carefully, not to tread too roughly on top of the Constitution.
I understand that, but if you're signing up to make public comments, giving your name would be part of that process. You're going to be standing in front of everybody, plus it's going on international media, as far as YouTube, so they're going to know who they are. And as far as the stating of the magisterial district, there is precedent from other school boards in this Commonwealth that they've had the issues of people coming in from other jurisdictions and speaking, and limiting it to the folks in that voting district, I don't think is egregious. Like I said, it's already been set. And, again, we have discretion, we have leeway, and I believe that everyone should have the opportunity to speak, as it says in the First Amendment, "Address the government for redress of grievances." But by the same token, we also want to follow the rules and the way things are set. So I don't think that making someone tell you their name and magisterial district at that time, and let's face facts, we've had people that have come up here, one person in particular who comes quite regularly and doesn't know his magisterial district, but stands there and reads poems to us. I don't see how that's... He gets to speak, but I would like to know if you're a member of this voting community, of this community, sending your kids here, whatever. I just don't see that it's a violation of anybody's rights to make them say their name, make them write down their name in magisterial district. That's my thoughts on it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sir.
Can you... The Fourth and Fifth Amendment, I don't think applies in this instance, does it?
No.
I don't believe that.
Fourth Amendment search and seizure.
Yeah.
We're not seizing anyone, we're not searching anyone. They're voluntarily giving us their name.
I don't think it's constitutionally, and no disrespect, I don't think there's a constitutional problem with requiring someone to give their name and their district. Is there?
No.
No.
Well...
Okay.
Got the Constitution right here.
I'm well versed in the Constitution, and I'm not trying to be antagonistic on this, but it is not a violation of a citizen's rights. In every board in this country, you must come up and state your name. They do it at the board of supervisors, they do it with all the school boards. Any public meeting, council meetings, they all have to say their name. And I don't want to see somebody to come up here who is just going to speak, hey, I'm going to come up here and throw a bunch of grievance at you, and walk away, and we don't know who they are, where they came from, or anything. I think there has to be some responsibility by the public, too, to let us know who they are, because how can I respond to that person later, as you have well done, gone out and, hey, I want to talk to you, give me an email, give me a phone call? If they're not willing to give us the name, again, it's not a violation of the Constitution to make them say their name. It's just not.
They need to give us proper identification.
Well, they don't. And the reason that I say that is a deputy sheriff can come up to you in a consensual encounter and ask you for your identification, but if you are not being detained, you do not have to provide that information to them. And they are constitutionally bound, so as are we.
And that deputy would need probable cause based on whatever reasonable suspicion. Here, we're not worried about probable cause or reasonable suspicion. Here, we're conducting a public meeting.
We are conducting a public meeting. And I'd leave it at your discretion, but I would just tread carefully on the Constitution.
And I think we are. Any further discussion?
The next bylaw that is being presented to you with proposed amendments is 127P, and this is specifically regarding board members' electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Effective... Or, the General Assembly has amended two code sections, 2.2-3701 and 2.2-3708.3, that beginning July 1, 2024. School board members who are either a person with a disability, as defined by Code Section 51.5-40.1, or a caretaker of a person with a disability defined by that same code section, may participate remotely and electronically in a meeting. The main difference is that your presence electronically can be counted now towards the quorum if you are participating electronically for one of those two reasons. And so, the proposed amendments do reflect that change, and it's coming to you now, so it can be considered by the board prior to the effective date of July 1, 2024. The other change to this is really to alter the language, to make it clear, to better mirror the requirements in the code section. So currently, under our bylaw, if a member tells the chairman that I'm participating remotely because of such and such reason, the board then votes to accept or to approve that participation. However, the code does essentially say that if the member notifies the chair prior to the meeting under certain restrictions, under certain circumstances, then they can participate remotely. So this language clarifies that in that it will automatically be approved if the board member notifies the chairman prior to the meeting. It does allow board members to challenge that participation, and at that point, if there is a challenge, we'd call for a vote, and the minutes would reflect that. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has in regards to these proposed changes.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, with that, say it's a committee meeting. We have three members on that committee. This has came up in the past, where what would happen in a tie vote? Because one member's electronic, two members are here. Tie vote, would that go to the chairman of that committee? Because currently, I believe our chairman, or our tiebreaker, how would that go?
It's treated the same. If a member is participating electronically in a meeting pursuant to the bylaw, then they would be able to cast their vote, and it would be... If you have three members, you're not going to have a tie vote. You're either going to have two to one or three to zero.
So that member could vote for themselves to participate electronically at that point?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, at that point, it would be two other members.
No, this is a great question. So, we updated this policy last year. So if there is an even number of board members or committee members, and there is a tie, then what happens is, is then it will go to the next meeting where you have a full representation of a board, okay? If at that time, it ties, and say, one of the individual members abstained, or for whatever reason didn't vote, and it's still a tie, then that motion dies until it comes back up with new information. In regards to the committee situation, which I know what you're referencing, in that particular situation, both of the committee members agreed not to. But if the members then said, I agree, then the other one didn't, then it would die. That individual would then still be on the phone, but they wouldn't be able to participate as a voter in that particular meeting. So hopefully, that never happens again, but essentially, that's what would happen. And, yeah, in no situation does a chair, part of this board, get two votes or goes to a tie to him. It would go in the way that I just presented it to you.
Yeah, and I forget where we landed when we brought up the tiebreakers, because I know in the past, it was set for the board of supervisors. I mean, that would be kind of asinine to do that during...
And that's why we changed the tie vote, sir.
Right. Yeah, so I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Yeah, good question, Mr. Atkins, yeah. Okay, Mr. Chair, if there's no other questions there, as I mentioned, this is coming to the full board for approval on June 25th, so please pass any questions to Ms. Jordan and myself. More than happy to clarify any other questions or add any other information in there for your approval on the 25th. And then with that, Mr. Chair, I'm handing it back to you for the committee assignments.
And next on our agenda is committee assignments. Upon Mrs. Ellen White's resignation from the school board, which became effective on May 31, 2024, there are vacancies on both the Instruction Committee and the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mr. Darryl Bell has been appointed to serve as the chair of the Instruction Committee, and Mr. Scott Sturdevent has been appointed to serve as a member on the Buildings and Grounds Committee pursuant to the FCPS bylaw 113P, and no vote is required on these appointments.
Congratulations.
Thank you to both of y'all.
All righty then.
Meetings will be at 11:00 p.m. every night? Yeah.
All right, we are at the point of our agenda for board member comments. Does any of the board members have a comment?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Adam Vice Chair.
So, Mr. Clovis, congratulations on the promotion, and congratulations to your family as well. So I know that the family... There's a big family commitment into this job as well, so the support comes from the home front. So thank you all very much. And congratulations to Mr. Bell. I look forward to seeing you on the Instruction Committee, chairing it. And congratulations, Mr. Sturdevent, on being appointed to Building and Grounds. I'll see you at those meetings. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
Congratulations once again, Mr. Clovis. Marshall, so are you from that area? Okay. Okay, I grew up around that area, I was just kind of wondering. But, once again, congratulations. I know you'll have your hands full. It's a big school, and I know we're packed in there. But my other comment is, we have an open seat for the Red Bud District, and this is a public hearing. I would expect the public to be more proactive in this, and let their voices be heard. It's disappointing that we don't hear from the people that this person will represent, you know, so that we can make a better decision on how that their voices are heard on this board. I think that this is the reason why... Or this is the reason why so many have lost trust in the public education system, is they don't have their voices represented up here, and it gets pushed by the wayside. I understand that people are busy. I understand that, you know, we've all got families out there, but active participation in your child's education is paramount. You know, it isn't something to just leave to the board members, the teachers, the principals, the superintendent. You have to be an active participant in your child's education, and I'm disappointed that we haven't had the public in here. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bell?
Yes, I concur with Mr. Miles about this. Mr. Miles, sorry, Mr. Atkins about this. It is disappointing that members of the Red Bud District didn't come today to express their viewpoints on who they would like to represent them for the remainder of the session, if you will, until November. Certainly, it could play a role in determining who we choose, but also who may decide to run for the November seat that's available as well for, I believe it's just a year, because they have to finish out Ellen's term. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm sure that whomever we pick, we're going to have comments about that, but to be fair, if you're not here to show your support or to give your opinion, then why would you wait until after it's already finished to do so? So I highly recommend that in the future, if you want to have a say in what we do up here, because we're beholden to you just as much as Dr. Hummer is beholden to us to determine what path we take in regards to the public education of your children. determine what path we take in regards to the public education of your children. So please, come, show up, and be a part of the decision-making that takes place here, regardless of what other activities you have. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may just add, Mr. Bell and Mr. Atkins put it very well from a very large-scale perspective of the decisions that we make here on behalf of the schools. On a smaller scale, there are some big votes coming up. The CIP projects, the fourth high school, we will be voting on that this summer, and there has been a lot of consternation in the community and a lot of comments, one way or the other, and that person at the end of the dais will have a vote, and there is not a single soul, aside from the Clovices who are here with us, and Mrs. Bell and Molly, in the gallery to have a say over that. So when I get, when we will get heat from various sides for those votes, those people who are going to give us that grief are not sitting here commenting on who should sit in that seat, and that's really disappointing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments by the board? I will proffer one comment. I do wish to say that I am glad that Mr. Bell has stepped up to chair the committee left vacant by Ms. White. And I'm going to say publicly that I have found Mr. Bell to be a very good member of this board, and I have enjoyed being around him. He is the, he has been, he has been a bright spot, I will say. So I congratulate you on stepping up and taking those responsibilities on. All right, with that said, we have one announcement tonight, and the announcement is the next school board meeting will be held on June 25, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. With that said, we are at the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.